Andy had something about that, how were you?
Good.
All right. Sorry, I'm looking for something before we start the meeting. You good to go?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you for everybody being here this evening. It's been raining, sunny, rainy, kind of snow. Six oh three, Wednesday, November fifth, twenty twenty one. Want to call the Sunapee School District meeting to order in the gymnasium. We'll start off with a roll call. We'll start with our student rep on the far corner.
Karen Messenger. Sean Onehand, pitch for something.
Paul Davis, your principal at Sunapee Central Elementary School.
Matt Anderson, school board.
Karen Poploss, school board.
Scott Wilson, school board.
Jesse Patter, school board.
Russell Holden, superintendent.
And just for clarity, three of us didn't get a fight with the six of them over there. Andy Nichols had something come up. He, I think this might be the first meeting he's missed in the service, so I don't believe he'd be able to join us tonight. We have a quorum of three and four, so we're going to proceed. Ray is working on the sound. We are getting used to the microphones. Heard some good, positive feedback from that staff, but there's still some things to work out, so remain patient while he works on that. Want to go to pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes from October sixth, twenty twenty one meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes October sixth, twenty twenty one, school board meeting.
Okay. So in the discussion, I have to find what page it's on. There's a minor omission or minor correction regarding the, there it is, on page eight. It says vote unanimous under the approval of the post-district nurse. And I had abstained, so it was four. And my extension, just to make sure the notes are accurate. Did anyone else have anything common or correction? Okay. All in favor of approving the October sixth, twenty twenty one, school board meeting minutes with the correction that I added, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the non-public session, October sixth, twenty twenty one.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the non-public session, October sixth, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Carrie. Any discussion, corrections, amendments? Okay, thank you. All in favor of approving the minutes of the non-public session, October sixth, twenty twenty one? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous there. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of school board meeting, I'm sorry, restate that. Looking for approval of the minutes for the public hearing, October twentieth, twenty twenty one. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing, October twentieth, twenty twenty one.
Okay, so again, Carrie, any discussion, corrections, amendments? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes for the public hearing, October twentieth, twenty twenty one? Please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Agenda review. I think what we're going to do is, I'm just going to jump in with one. Seven and a half, we're going to make what was intended to be a running, what will be a running agenda topic is sort of board communication, board thoughts. So we can just have a break between things before action items and others, just to discuss. We talked about that, I think, in the last couple of meetings, so I'm just adding that now.
Board topics?
Yeah.
If you like that now as a standing agenda, because we never took any action on that last.
Okay, that's where I, I think, I thought we had. So if we can do that as a standing item, we'll just tuck it in for tonight and then have it as a standing item. Okay? Does that work? Anything else you can think of? Do you have anything that you want to amend to do that? Okay. Minor addition to the agenda. A good forum. So I just wanted to remind everybody that with the policy B E D H, we had a discussion about the public comment. Quite a discussion last meeting, and during the meeting amended the policy. So twenty minutes instead of fifteen will be set aside at the end of each meeting. And speakers will be allowed four minutes, so there's more time. There's a single session at the beginning of the meeting instead of two sessions split. For anyone who wasn't here, or this is news to them, news to you. What I've observed in my years on the board is that often the first one, there's no speakers, and then the second one, there's a lot of speakers, you could carry. There is request for more time to speak and to be able to cover more, so the board moved to the four-minute and the twenty-minute to give more, more time. So just as a reminder, the intent is public comment and to keep the meeting moving, honor the rules, honor the time. We're getting close on the four minutes. If you're still going strong, I respect for Pat and I watch, just to encourage you to comply with the policy and then let the next person speak. We appreciate this time to hear your input on the public, whether it's a short comment or a long comment. It shares your opinion in a public documented place, and we appreciate you being here to share. So anything that the board want to add on the change in the policy? So whoever wants to speak first, we'll try to go back and forth and be inclusive, but we'd love to have your first, last name and your address, and then you can have the floor at the microphone. Yep, it's on this side here. Any comments for public comment? Go right up, go ahead up the mic. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Lee Ostrone, seven, Onyork Road. When I was looking for information about this meeting, I looked into the intertown record, noticed that all of the town meetings were listed. However, this is not listed, and I'm wondering why not?
So this is a public statement, not a Q and A. There are times we have a Q and A forum format, like we're talking about.
Oh, what is this?
This is your, your ability to share your opinion or your statements. Certainly consider, consider all of these topics that you bring up when in this forum or emails or otherwise, and the board will address them as we go through.
Okay, my opinion is it should be in the intertown record, listed under town events for upcoming meetings. I think it's important, and I would like to ask if everyone can speak up. So we've got audio here.
Sure.
Thank you.
We're hoping, microphones are improving that, so just, just with respect to you, to what you brought up, just a sound check from others, how, it's got to be more. All right.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you for voicing that. Thank you for being here to give your opinion. Next speaker, please. Signal you want to go to the mic, please do.
Hi, my name is Adrian Scott. I live at two oh three Timmicky Road in Sunapee. We've met here before. I would like to address the school board in regards to the current COVID protocol. As most of you are aware, there is an outbreak at the elementary school a few weeks back, and it became more and more apparent that the Sunapee School District is not following CDC guidelines, recommended to schools. And I know vaccinations have just been approved, and I'm very excited about that, but current CDC guideline recommends universal indoor masking in K through twelve schools, regardless of vaccination status, as well as other protocols that they recommend are put into place. Also, I pulled my two children out of school because of health, mental health and physical health concerns that I had for them. And my concern was, I felt like I was not getting a lot of response from the school. I wrote to the school board, I wrote to the superintendent, I was in touch with the principal, and all I was getting back was form letters. I did not get an explanation on why things were the way they were or why they could not accommodate my son. He has a cardiac condition, and if he were to get sick, he would be hospitalized and would have long-term effects. And at this point, they aren't able to fix his cardiac condition because his little vessels are too small. And so my concern was to keep him safe, but instead of getting communication from anyone in the school, I felt like I was getting like a cold shoulder and actually penalized for trying to take care of my children despite being in discussion with their doctors, his cardiologist, and having all of them on board. And I would love to see that change and maybe figure out a way to incorporate a way for parents who are concerned during a COVID outbreak, even though I know the school is not allowed to go remote, but allow a way for them to do the work at home. And as long as that's turned in, have it be an excuse absence. Because I, you know, I've received truancy papers for trying to keep my son safe. And this other thing, I would love to see, currently the New Hampshire school dashboard does not keep a good count. It's like three weeks behind. So there's no way to know what the actual counts are in the school. And I, I know even though we received emails from Dr. Houston, who tried to keep everyone kind of up to date, it was like, oh, we've got one here, oh, we've got one here. But there is no way to know, like, how many kids were still out of school? Was it trending down, was it trending up? And so it was hard to make an educated decision on when it was okay to send my child, children back to school. And I know some schools have like an internal dashboard, and I would love to see that at Sunapee, just kind of updating what the current counts are and how they're doing. And that's, that's kind of my, my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks for being here and sharing your voices. Other speakers?
John Augustine, two fifty eight Stagecoach Road in Sunapee. A few different things this evening. One, I'll just give you an update on the births in Sunapee this year. Town clerk tracks births, and between January first and October thirty first, there were ten children born in Sunapee. Reason I think that's relevant for this meeting, because I think in six years, that'll be the number for your first grade class. Some people say, well, it's not just people that are born in Sunapee. People could move into Sunapee sometime between now and when that first grade class starts. And that's true, but the housing market in Sunapee is currently different than it has been in the past. The number of short-term rentals like Airbnb or the RBO is just exploding. And some of the town department heads have expressed concern on what impact that is having on our town. Neighbors have expressed concern in that the owners of those short-term rentals are not residents of this town. They're often investors who live somewhere else and just rent on a short-term basis to people coming for the weekend or for a week. So because the town itself won't address the situation, a group of citizens has started a short-term rentals alliance, and their goal is not to prevent those things from happening, but to try to provide some regulation so that those rentals are following the same kind of rules as legitimate businesses are following, and they're not having an impact on the neighborhood. The reason I think that's important, because I think it does impact enrollment when the housing stock is not being purchased by people who are going to move here and put their children in schools, or just transient. So just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. If you'd like to have any of those people who run that group, which is not me, I just heard about it, I'm not involved directly, I'm sure they would come and give you some thoughts on what they're doing and how they're trying to influence the Sunapee Select Board to put in some procedures, to at least monitor, if not regulate those. Some other things, more budget-related. So as of December thirty first of twenty twenty, the town has a rainy day fund, which they officially call the Undesignated Fund Balance of one point nine million. I would encourage you as a school board to ask if any of that money could be used for your school infrastructure needs. As a taxpayer, I'm going to be reluctant to pay more when that money's just sitting there, so please don't ask me to pay more unless you're willing to ask the Select Board to release some of those funds for you to use for infrastructure improvements. I'm sure they'll say, you can't co-mingle town funds and school funds, but as taxpayers, you write one check. So if you say you want to charge X hundred thousand dollars more, and they're willing to release that same X hundred thousand dollars back to the taxpayers, that's a wash for me. My tax bill doesn't go up. So please don't ask me to pay more unless you're willing to ask them to tap into that rainy day fund, at least in some small part. Also, budget-related, it's my understanding that teachers who don't live in Sunapee get to send their children to Sunapee schools at a very large discount. So they pay approximately three thousand five hundred dollars. Parents who live out of town and send their kids to school who aren't employees pay closer to fourteen thousand dollars. So if you were to ask those teachers to pay at least that full tuition amount, I think you'd get an extra two hundred thousand dollars every year in tuition. And I'm not an expert on education, but I know a few teachers who live in other towns, and they don't have those kind of discounts in other towns. So please don't ask me to pay more if you're not willing to ask those people to pay.
Thank you for being here and sharing your voice. So just so, again, to try to be respectful, when I do this, it's fifteen seconds.
Jan Benford, through the Point Road. I just want to correct something that I said at the last school board meeting relating to ability to speak. I mentioned that anyone could say point of order, but that, I'd like to retract that, that's wrong. It's only the school board, any school board member could ask the chair for, as a point of order, to allow someone extended period of time to speak. The reason I'm bringing this up is that I'm disappointed that there won't be a public comment at the end of the meeting, because there are a lot of things that come up during that meeting. And it's very difficult, as this lady just found out, that you can't, it's hard to get responses to questions. So I would like to have you reconsider offering another public comment at the end, or if you find that there isn't a lot of people here, offer that opportunity and ask if there's anyone at the end of the meeting that would like to make public comments. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Piazza, North Road. I agree with Jan. I really like that we had the opportunity to have a public comment at the end. Sometimes with, you know, family commitments, you get here a little bit late, or you hear things throughout the meeting, and then you want to respond, and if we don't have that opportunity, then we have to wait a whole month, and that doesn't seem reasonable, so I was wondering if you could reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just Whitehouse over on Longway Road. Last month, you guys put up the enrollment, the pre-K. Pre-K is funded by every state in New England, except for New Hampshire. As a matter of fact, it's not even fully funded by the taxpayers of Sunapee. People have to pay tuition. So if you factor out the pre-K, you actually lost forty kids in the last two years, had a ten percent reduction in enrollment. Enrollment didn't stay the same. I just think that's slight of hand, shall we say, to put up there that you enroll in state same, you actually had a reduction. Because you're constantly putting these bonds forward to try to renovate the school, which, you know, I've been in that school, and I said when I was a community advisor, couldn't ever put a penny into it. I mean it. I don't blame it in some ways, but I think that when you come to a public meeting as a board and as an organization, and you try to manipulate what truly is happening in your school system when it comes to enrollment, you put a pretty big distrust in the general public of what you're actually trying to do, which is the right thing. You're trying to make it safer for kids, but when you try to manipulate the information that you're receiving in order to do so, you might, it's just, you're basically shooting yourself in the foot. You're discrediting yourself, and it just makes it one more reason for people to vote out. Thank you.
All right, voices.
Samantha Hino from Lower Wayne Street. I also wanted to speak out about the public forum, because I do agree that it's helpful to be able to address, I did like both sessions, but if we are going to be able to have only one opportunity to speak, I think perhaps if that time could be set to the end of the meeting so that you could address things or get your bearings and be able to address things. And I thought that there was also talk about having it be something that was not necessarily a question and answer, but that would allow the board time to be able to respond. But that still is the case, and you might be able to address the things during the meeting or if that went down altogether. But for what it's worth, I wanted to state that I agree that having it twice like it was before was more beneficial. And if nothing else, if it could be at the end of the meeting instead.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing a motion. Thank you very much for the act of comments. We're going to move forward to a presentation on the Sunapee Little High School Garden Club with Mr. Coverdale and the Spartans. The floor is yours.
Do you want to use the microphone?
We have your comfortable.
Just like. Okay, well, thank you so much for asking us to talk about the garden club. I was excited to be able to share some of the stuff that's going on. So here we have a photo of the outdoor classroom that was created about five years ago. The kids in the picture are current seniors. So I just wanted to start with that, because that's really where the idea of garden club started, was we made this outdoor space, spaces for both flower gardens and vegetable gardens. So then from there, then here, it's the idea of having a garden club so that we can maintain it and grow from there, so. So just some of the things that we've done, it's kind of neat to look at all my pictures and go back because I realized all the stuff that we have been doing. So on the left you see, it's hard to see, but it's a indoor vertical garden in my classroom window, because we have nice south-facing. And so we do our seedlings early in February, March, to get everything started. And then on the right, you see some students out in one of the outdoors classrooms picking some peppers. And on the left, I love this picture because this student was so excited about our garden that every day he would go out and pick a cucumber and eat the whole thing during snack time. This whole, like that. So one of the things, it certainly is clear that when kids are involved in growing their own vegetables, they're much more apt to eat them. So all of these kids that helped with that, we not only grew them, but we took them in to the kitchens, which is right inside of that doorway there, and we're able to make some different things with them, that they learn how to do some cooking with some of the vegetables that they had and enjoy eating. So here you can see some salsa that we made from one year with some almost two pot peppers that I learned, learned the hard way when I rubbed my eyes. But here we have, on the left side, the sunflowers we decided to do. So the kids have collected, in fact, yesterday they took them all down and collected a whole bunch of bags of sunflowers that hopefully will get to the baseball team and softball teams, and they can enjoy them. And then on the right side, it's hard to see a little bit, but on the back, there are some old pallets there that we put up that are all herbs. And so since then, made another garden underneath that that has herbs in it, and it's right outside with the cooking classes. So this, before we did this in the spring, we talked to Mr. Fred and said, what are you going to be baking this year, what kind of herbs do you want? Let us at least try some of that and put it out there. So we're going to, hoping to keep going with that and see it being used. And one fall, we decided it would be great to plant tulips, and they really wanted to do them in the shape of an S for Sunapee. So that's them figuring that out on the left. You can see it on the right, didn't quite come out as well. But also on the right, that's the spring of twenty twenty. And so you can kind of, it was kind of a little bright spot in a really tough time of year where we had dark, dark windows, because nobody was there. So I came in and took a picture and sent it to them all, because they didn't get to see the flowers. They'll come back every year, so let's see. And I always try to make sure that it's, you know, there's seasons for gardening. And so there's some weeks that are varied, because not a lot going on, and other weeks that, that there are. So this was a few years ago, where I got some pumpkins, and we pulled out all the pumpkin seeds and made some roasted seeds and so forth, and they counted them all and stuff. But we had some good conversations about what other things can we grow, and they certainly talked about pumpkins, and we'll talk about that in a moment. And on the left side, you see some kids, they are dissecting a marigold, and they were just amazed at how many seeds we could get from the marigold. So we saved all those, preserved them for the next year. And then on the right side, these are pressed flowers. So we had, we made a wooden press, picked a bunch of flowers, pressed a while, and made them into some nice cards, and they sent like thank you and birthday cards to people that they knew with those. And here you see them making wreaths out of pine cones. That was a, trying to go out in the woods and get some pine cones and do some Christmas wreaths. This is a summer project that the students did, working on building that raised flower garden bed. That's all out of old pallets that we got from like orders at the school lot and so forth. They just said, save me the pallets, and we cut them all up. So they learned how to measure and do all of that, which came out really nice. And then we started getting into some other projects. So on the left here, you'll see, it's hard to see, but there's a line of pots there, and that was for graduation. So we were asked if we could provide all the flower pots for graduation, so we put all of those together, and they were a big hit. And on the right, in the past, we had the landscaping company do all our big pots for around the school and the elementary school, too. And so they asked us to do that this year, so that was a lot of fun, that was a rainy day. But we filled all those pots, and they got put throughout the school. So we'll do both of those projects again this year, if they were successful. And then we decided just to go bigger, right, just to cover it up. So this is where Mr. Carter, I've definitely, and Greg, let's do some projects together. So I'm going to let him talk to, before I do that, I want to put a plug out for that. So I have the Booster Club, because they have supported a lot of this stuff from the very beginning of making the outdoor classroom. I just go to them and say, hey, I want to do this project, can you help fund it? And they've done that a number of years for different things, which has been a big help. And they continue to do so, you want to talk about it?
Sure. So I don't know how many of your gardens, but a big part of gardens, successful gardens, is light. And so a lot of the gardens that are here at school, they're bound by a courtyard. And I was up at Tilton Park, and I'm sure you know where it is. It's a beautiful area as far as sunlight. It's during the summer, I bet it gets fourteen, fourteen hours of just straight light. And so I was looking at that area, and just thought this would be a perfect place for a garden. So I contacted the Sunapee Conservation Commission, who manages the area, and put forth a proposal that, hey, the garden club, we could, we could take a, it was... Sharon has talked me down a lot of cliffs in that, oh yeah, we could do this huge, you know, the whole thing, different plots of different crops at different times. But it ended up being a ninety by forty-four But it ended up being a ninety by forty foot plot, which is a pretty good first step. And I received their, I got their permission and then tilled that ground last fall, took the sod and turned it in and let, and that's what you have to do to have a successful garden, is turn the sod. And so some students were involved in that and turned it in the fall. Then I contacted the town, I guess, what, the rec department, but I was thinking the transfer, they have now started doing compost at the transfer station. So they delivered a ton of compost. And then students and Sharon and I went up there and spread it all over. We didn't, we didn't do a pH test, we didn't do a soil test. We thought, we're just gonna cowboy this and we could use the compost in the transfer station and tilled that into it. Then in the spring, I asked for, from my colleagues here at school, for ground cover and we repurposed a number of tarps, things like that, and used those for ground cover and planted thirty hills of pumpkins and thirty hills of winter squash. And part of that was, I was gonna be gone this summer and squash and pumpkin are kind of, pine cone blood and go because you don't have to, you don't have to monitor it, they kind of weed themselves. I also had a student, she's a junior, she's very interested in ag, major ag future, but she was very interested in just maintaining her own plot up at the top of that portion of the garden. So as you know, we had a very wet summer. I don't know if any gardeners realized great products, but it was a very, very good summer as far as creating a lot of vegetable up there. And that's, let's see, we harvested those pumpkins, sold them, harvested the winter squash and sold those at Sharon's store. And kids were involved in all, in all areas of it. There was a sign, help me out, what's his name?
Lucian.
Lucian Osborne did an eagle badge for putting a permanent sign up there. So there was just a lot of involvement from a lot of different areas of the community. That's really what it's about. And, you know, the problem with the classroom is it's a lot of abstract in theory. This is all practical. Just the miracle of you plant something, you take care of it, and it's, I don't know, it's a power you can't reproduce in a classroom. This is lifelong learning, this is, the kids are excited about it. So that's, that was the first year, the inaugural year, we're talking, Sharon and I are talking about how to change it, modify it. We've talked about how to cut flowers. There's all kinds of things that you can do with the right piece of land. It's something that I love, it's something that Sharon loves, so it's kind of a win-win. And if we can get some students who love it, it's just about planting that desire in the garden.
And I just want to add, the products that were sold at the store all went back to the garden club. And so we had pumpkins, we had squash and zucchini. We had so much of everything that the squash has also already been made with our food classes, been made into some soups that will be served at our empty bowl dinner that's coming up in another couple of weeks, so you can try that. So we're gonna do more of that also. So you can see that, I think it's a picture of the pumpkins, this patch, there's the kids harvesting. And the left is, we have so many pumpkins after, after the syllabus, we had so many left over. So this was a math class, this sixth grade math class, we did all these calculations, circumference diameter measurements, wave height, and then guess how many seeds and so forth. And then they carved them and got the seeds and counted the seeds and made some, then the garden club took those seeds and we roasted them. Then we did that just yesterday. And on the right, you'll see, this is a drawing by a student, so the art class, the art teacher borrowed a bunch of our pumpkins, borrowed them and made silhouettes out of them and they were drawing them, so that's kind of a fun thing too. And he made himself a couple of people out front. Those are from our patch also. And then we've talked a little bit about the law of planning, what's next and what's coming next. And Mr. Coverdale talked about cut flowers, it's an idea we had for that Tilton Park garden. We also have, I showed this picture there, if you can see on the right, the kind of triangular shaped thing is a greenhouse that was made a couple of years ago by our shop class. It's a great greenhouse, except it gets way, way too hot. And so we have not been able to grow anything in there, like the plastic melts in there. So our mission this year, I'm also teaching a horticulture class coming next semester, so our mission is to figure out why that happens, what's wrong, what can we do to fix it and fix it so we can use it. So that's part of our what's next too. We're also looking at, we have some makeshift barrels where we collect water until we want to do a really nice design, maybe go places, maybe something at Tilton Park that collects water also that we can use. So that's another part of the project. Definitely continue to connect more with the roots class and like do some planning ahead of time, what their plans are and how we can help grow some of the things for that. And maybe, possibly, we'll just create the run of the market and we'll see how that goes. But that's what we're looking at. I just want to add too that the members of students for this garden club vary quite a bit and I kind of like it that way because it's really open-ended. Kids, you know, when soccer season ends and there's two weeks between soccer and basketball, I get more kids. And that's fine, come on, let's go. Right? And so sometimes someone will come and say, can I rent my friend? Of course, come on and join us. So sometimes I'll have two kids that are also with pumpkin seeds and another day I might have twelve kids that are helping clean up the garden. So it varies quite a bit. When we go up to Tilton Park, it could be five to three, who knows? Lots of different kids. So we're excited about that. We've had a lot of comment from the community, especially about that Tilton Park one. One day I was out there with a group of kids and the man across the street and his wife were taking a walk and he said, this is amazing, tell me all about it. And then he said, I have a commercial sized horticulture, can I please hortiliate it for you all? Now, I can say no to that, we're gonna knock on your door, pretty soon then we'll do that. So we've already got that set up. So it's kind of nice to see that community connection too with this event.
The other thing that's so good is if you have a problem, we're not sure what to do with this. For example, we have mice as the pumpkin floors, some mice took some vested interest in that fruit. So, okay, so that's a problem. How are we gonna figure that out? Well, let's give it to the kids. Where can they find out? And you know YouTube helps a lot, but it's, it's a good project for kids to be involved to problem solve. And should we put urine scent on the pumpkin? Should we do some sort of noise maker? What works? And that's really, really what this is about. I'm involved in the honeybee club at the school. It's the same kind of thing. Let's try this hive this way. And let's try this hive this way and see what happens. And that's where, that's where real learning, when you don't know the answer, the answer's not in the back of your books. So let's figure it out. And when students see us struggle with that and try to figure it out, they see us going through the process of finding out the research and applying it. You can't, you can't get better than that. I mean, it's just the real deal. So this is what's exciting. Sharon and I, we complement each other as far as she's, as you tell, all the detailed person, I'm kind of the abstract. So it's really been a pleasure. And thank you for, you know, listen to us.
Thanks, Sharon. If you'd like to go before, something to say, if you want to give a broad pitch and shameless promotion to the Empty Bowl project.
Sure, the goal is to put on by the service club. And so the service club is a group of students who meet once a week and work on different projects. And one of them, in the last few years, has been the Empty Bowl. It's gonna happen on November eighteenth at the livery. And so it's, it's a combination this year of a takeout or come and sit down, they do these two different servings. The idea is that to remember that people in our community and all over the world have empty bowls. And so we want to help feed them. So when you buy your ticket, you're purchasing, your money goes towards filling bags of food for our local community people. You'll walk away, some years it's with a goal, this year it's with an ornament, a Sunapee ornament that the kids are making, drawing in the art room right now. And so you'll go home with something that was part price of the ticket. So in the past years, we have filled, I mean really filled, some really good, good sized bags of food, thirty bags for thirty different families, along with restocking of food pantry. So we, we always have some money left over. We keep an eye on the list that comes out with the lower trial every year or every couple of months. And when we see that, we take the good shopping and we buy some of the stuff and bring it in. So it's a really great fundraiser and it's, kids serve all the food, we have music by the students, it's a lot of fun. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the garden and all you've done. We've entered eight different programs into it, problem solving and everything else that we would like to help. We are gonna move on to school updates, starting with the elementary school. Please, Mr. Houston.
When I think of October, unfortunately, most of my month was tied up with COVID. As was previously stated, we had a major COVID spike at the elementary school. But one of the cool things about this meeting, it forces me to look back on the month and say, so what else happened? And what's really cool is we have a lot of things happen. First off, I want to give a shout out to the elementary school staff, they did an amazing job this past month keeping the ship going, filling in for duties, filling in for classes, covering procedures that were out. They did an amazing job. And so a shout out to the elementary staff. In the midst of all this, one of our staff members, who's in charge of the book fair and also in charge of the cardboard challenge that we do every year, was out sick that week. And so it was the question, what do we do with the book fair? What do we do with these things that were already scheduled? The book, again, the staff jumped in and so we'll take over the book fair and so they took over the book fair, so we were still able to keep our book fair. Shale Drive unfortunately was canceled, but our librarian who's in charge of it is going to be doing it via video, so that'll be coming up in the next week or two. So we're excited to share that. This year, because of everything that was happening, we went with our plan that we did last year for Halloween, which was instead of doing costumes of the traditional parade, we had Black and Orange Day last Friday and the food service department provided a treat for our students. And again, another shout out to Rob Fulisham, our director of food services. He has been out sick the last three weeks. And in the midst of being sick, he's emailing me back and forth saying, I've ordered the cookies, I've ordered the ice creams, everything's all set for them and we're still worried about our kids even though he's home sick. So we want to say thank you to the food service people. And then in the midst of our schools, our kids still went on field trips. At the beginning of the month, our fourth graders went to the polar caves, our kindergarteners watched the library, they've also, they delivered pumpkins to town hall. Our fifth grader, fifth grade group will be going down to the town hall next week to learn about town government and have an interview with the town clerk about that. And the last week, the two last weekends that are happening is, one, parent teacher conferences are starting this week and that'll be going on for the rest of the month. And then lastly, those SPTO, our parent organization, unfortunately canceled charter for us because of everything that was happening. But we're getting ready to do the raffle card that we had last year. Remember, we had a raffle card that we sold and they're getting, getting ready to have that one sealed right after Thanksgiving. So you'll be hearing more about that. And last year we raised over ten thousand dollars for student activities and hope to start again this year. So thank you.
Do you want to go ahead?
Can you go first?
Sure. Yeah, student representative, go for it.
Sure. So the students have been very busy with their work as the end of the very first quarter is this Friday. And the student body has had very positive attitudes and is looking forward to the next few weeks at school. We have a numerous of up, a numerous amount of upcoming events. The girls varsity soccer team is traveling to Manchester tomorrow to play their semifinal soccer game. And the boys soccer game has their championship match this Friday. Next week, as we will be getting into, is going to be a weird week at school. The freshman and sophomore classes are taking a trip to Gettysburg to learn more about the history of the Civil War and just get up close and personal with history. And the junior and senior classes are also taking a trip to Washington DC next week and we're just going to learn all about our country. All the students are very, very excited and we have been talking about this for the past few weeks and can't wait to get into it. The sports are wrapping up and Thanksgiving break is right around the corner and we're looking forward to the next couple of months. Thank you.
That's great. And just for people that are curious and something way up there that's going on.
Where is the boys game Friday?
It is in Laconia at the
Laconia High School at seven thirty.
Thanks. Thanks for the update. Talk to them after the trip to DC. I think the close-up is an awesome program. Mr. Manayat, please.
All right, great. Thanks, Cam. So in addition to the Gettysburg trip for the ninth and tenth, the close-up for the juniors and seniors, we have some kids who aren't going on either trip. And so we're putting together Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, a number of enrichment activities for the students to choose from. So some kids will be visiting the community college, some kids are going to an art museum in Boston, some kids are going to World War II museums. So we've intentionally created lots of opportunities for students next week. This is not typical for us, but it's kind of, we shared, the freshmen and sophomore typically do their eighth grade to Gettysburg, they're took to Gettysburg in their eighth grade year, COVID times two, we've kept that from happening. We've told them, we will go when we can go, we can now go. And so that's where that's gonna be. I think the kids are excited, should be excited. Last week, we had our NEAS visit, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. Mrs. Parsons, our fearless, fearless chair of the steering committee, and the visit went as well as, as really we could have hoped. A couple of things, not to share all the, everything, and they will come with an official report later. Not surprisingly, very impressed with our kids, how welcoming our kids are. They commented how they would come here this morning and kids would be, how are you today? Good morning. And then when they, they left in the afternoon, our kids would be, have a good afternoon. They were really thinking back like just how consistently engaging the students were. Also, very impressed with senior project, which had its first checkpoint recently as well, so they were really engaged with the seniors in going through that process. And just tremendously impressed with the teachers and how many hats that they wear. You know, we've got Mrs. Parsons here, so we're a little bit on the spot, Mr. Coverdale because they presented, they've got the garden club and then Mrs. Parsons talked about the service club and doing empty bowls. And then she is in charge of senior project with another teacher, Mr. Coverdale, talked about going to garden club and the honeybee club and the chess club. And it's just, that's the, that's the aura of the school. And the committee saw that and were, you know, were really impressed with that. So we were very pleased with, with their visit. We also had National Honor Society induction last week and things have been busy. Again, it's the end of the first quarter, so we're gearing up to do that, have kind of a stretch week next week and then back to business the week after that. So it's been a busy but good time here at the school.
That's great. Do you want to, for folks that aren't familiar with NEAS, give a little bit more color to that and also how much prep it took for that visit, I think, with our fearless captain for that, but also just, it's quite a project for a lot of people over a lot of times. Just, just kind of conveying that would, I think, be informative to the community.
Yeah, so the New England Association of Schools and Colleges visit every ten years, but there's a lot of work, if it's done correctly, is continuous. And I think, thanks very much to Sharon and Mrs. Reed, are very active and our steering committee in general is very active in continuing work on it. So I think one of the nice things that we had is that when we do know that they were going to come, it wasn't like, let's hurry up for six months and let's be ready for this. It's a consistent process over the years. And so when they came into the pre-visit two years ago, the six things that they were really looking, that were being assessed on, we actually kind of, they used the term a check mark, that we were already, we're never done. And we're always working on it, we're always trying to get better, but we already met that standard and that was even before the visit. And then three years later, we certainly did go backwards, but we'd made significant progression at that time. You know, they came away with, you know, very impressed with the, like I said, they couldn't have been more impressed with the faculty, the steering committee, the kids. And it was, it was a very rewarding process for us. And again, it's a lot of work, but it's a lot of work over time. I don't know, Sharon, do you want to speak to it all or, I don't want to put you on the spot at all. Mr. Reed, you want to?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd be interested.
It's not, again, I'm sort of taken off as a long running way of running this business and being prepared.
Yeah, it's hard to be prepared, but I would just certainly tell you that it's changed a little bit from the last time we did it, 2010. And so this time, we had two visits and we had two visits because we did it two years ago, that's the week, actually, a full self-reflection. So that's evaluating all their standards and looking at everything, doing surveys, talking to lots of different people. And then we wrote reports on those. And from that, we then had to choose some goals ourselves that we wanted to set to improve and work on. So we set four priority areas that we were focused on and then we had the two years to work on that. So we spent a lot of time in meetings and planning and working on all of those things and then had to write another report to show how we had succeeded or how we had grown with those priority areas. And then from there, they come back. And so their job really is to And so their job really is to, you know, look and see that we have done what we said we're done. And through classroom observations, through talking with teachers, through meetings with kids and so forth, administration, school board. And so then they do that along with looking at the five standards that they're always keeping an eye on. And the other piece that they look at is our, our ability to, for continuous growth. And that, that includes our commitment as teachers for that growth and also even just commitment to professional development, the support of the community, all of those pieces come tied in. So it's a long process with a lot of different things going on, so there's a lot of pieces to it. But all of those, we did, we allowed all of them, so we were very pleased.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Reed, did right now, I'm hearing it, but thank you from us for all that work. It was, Scott and I were interviewed as part of the process and it was very clear that the continuing effort to self-reflect and continue to improve was greatly appreciated by that. They felt there was something very special there, so that was a very enjoyable moment of school board service to be part of that. Congratulations to everybody and thank you.
And I, I would say it's, you know, they're very committed and they're very invested in what they do. They're not just coming here and checking boxes off. It was clear that they were doing a lot of due diligence and really digging in. And it was just neat to see that piece of it, which I had been exposed to before. And, you know, we met with the team lead for about forty-five minutes and it was really neat to hear him say, I guess he was here, you know, two or three years ago, and he said, I asked to come back because I was so impressed, you know, with what you guys are doing here. I asked to come back and be part of it again this year, so it's nice to hear those kinds, you know, things.
Yeah, that's great, that's great, it takes a, it takes a village. If you want to pick that up as a topic, please, superintendent's update.
Anyway, I will actually stop there. This is a big process, so I have gone through lots of NEAS accreditation, self-studies, visitations. I've been on visitation committees. At one point, Mike Corrigan, I replaced him when I was just there to clean up the visitation. And the NEAS report, not so much here in Sonoma. Sonoma's always done well on the NEAS report and it does speak to the dedication of the administration and the teachers and the community and the investment they make in that self-reflection and that continuation to improve and to look to thing, to look to change things and do things differently. We saw an example of that today, I think, in the garden club. And one of the things that the chair of the community, who was a retired principal of Cape Cod, Mass, spoke of and really surmised our school, our high school, was without honey. And so they all have a sample of our honey. He said, this really speaks to what this is, this is that investment of community. This is that teachers going beyond what they need to go beyond. People selling this in stores, going to the community. It's part of who we are and what we invested in as a school, but more so as a community. And he really was quite taken with that sort of symbolism of that honey or job in our school and how they mesh together. And so again, I will echo the thanks to me here and to Sharon, knowing the work that has to go into the organization and setting up of this. It is not easy, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of energy, on top of the things you do every day. And so I thank you for that. I think it's also important to recognize that the chair was from a retired superintendent, retired principal of Massachusetts. Folks in the visiting committee were out of school, out of other schools, out of other public schools. And there was one who grew up close to here and is currently a principal down a little closer to Concord, and I know him well. And he was just taken, he was blown away on how do we do that? How do you do that? How do you get that to happen? How do you get your kids not to throw paintball on the ground? How do your kids not to destroy bathrooms? How come your kids are so polite when they talk to us? How can you teach us all understand what is you're trying to do in a good pedagogy of your teaching and how that relates into everyone else's classroom? And it made me stop and reflect and say, well, you know, we, we have good administrators, we have good practices, we have good professionals about that. But that's the expectation. There's always been the expectation here that what we do, we're going to do it well because we want our kids to get the best possible education they get when they walk out our door after fifteen years, potentially fourteen years, if you count preschool, of, of education here in Sonoma. So just hats off, it's an extensive, lengthy, exhausting process. There are folks, and I can tell you, and being a school, dread this process. This process can go on and be, it has been known to be the monkey on your back for years and years and years if your visitation does not go well. There were two, I believe, recommendations in the report that was given on the Friday. There was handfuls of combinations in two recommendations. And those recommendations go back to, again, that self-practice, self-reflection on things that we're already looking at and looking to improve on, so. I can't say enough about this, the work and the dedication that went into making that happen, but more, that's not, that wasn't a smoke and mirrors, that wasn't the dog and pony show, that's who we were. And we had an opportunity for other professionals in our career to walk in and make an assessment of us. And for us to sit on Friday and hear from colleagues who don't work with us, but colleagues in the same profession, that were doing it and doing it well to the level that is appreciated by other professionals, is really meaningful. And I think that was meaningful for the staff, so again, thank you Sharon, we can have more else to offer. Other things going on, and there are plenty of them. Negotiations, budget, personnel issues, parent issues, right to know requests, student issues. State reports following new legislation this year. Last year, folks know, may have been able to be a lot more involved in legislation and in different subcommittees within our legislative process because that was online, and so you get to go and you get to participate online and you could actually sit and watch and do the testimony, you could go and support or not support. Unfortunately, this year that's outlawed and you're no longer allowed to show your supporters, assign them that, you must actually go in person. It's very, very difficult to do for most of us that have jobs to actually get down there and to potentially speak in favor to or against a proposed piece of legislation so that the folks making that decision have all sides and pieces of information they need to make that appropriate decision. Really one of the ways to get to do that is when there is testimony that is given. And it's a hard process for me as a superintendent to follow legislation. And there were hundreds of LSISs that were put in, initial starts of legislation that were put in over the last couple of months. And that were also picked up from last year that were laid on the table and now being revisited. We continue to try to follow the best we can, I know we have some good reps, we're soon in Lincoln down there, doing what they can to voice their concerns and how things affect Sonoma. But it is, it is an interesting and different process from this year. It was easier to follow last year. There's ways that folks, and I'll try to keep the board updated when I can. But don't, don't let that go out of your mind, you know, it's, it's there, it's still going on. It was much more prevalent as we were able to get to it last year. I'll try to keep it in the forefront of your minds, but if you see things that come across your desk or your email regarding legislation or you hear things and you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, for people in the community as well and how they may impact us or Sonoma. I think a lot of legislation is meant to be positive, I don't think any legislation is meant to be a negative. But potentially it could have a negative effect on what it is we do and how we do it. Couple of last things, the COVID testing. So we, we signed up, our school was signed us up for, to be a test site for students in the rapid test with the state. We put our application in, we were approved, we put our order in for a rapid test to arrive. The state right now is experiencing a shortage of rapid tests and there are none to be had. My understanding is when they opened up some of the other test sites in some of the major areas like Nashville or Matta and some of the